Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for May the 9th. We are all present, Councilmember Thompson being the exception, and he is excused. The first item on our agenda is Item 1A. That's to hear a presentation and provide final funding recommendations for the fiscal year 2019-20 and prior years' available funding for Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Human Services Program. Liz and Dennis, thank you for all the work you put into this. I know this has been a major undertaking. We're looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Mayor and City Council Members, good morning. And I do want to start by thanking Dennis and the team for all their hard work, for our Housing Advisory Board for all their time and efforts, and also to all the applicants who spent much time putting together their proposals and doing their presentations for us. So it is a community process, and I will be going through the process, but also our funding, and that's what I'd like to start with. We are fortunate that our federal government came to announce our funding for the 1920 fiscal year. Very positive news. Community Development Block Grant did get an increase from last year. Home Investment did experience somewhat of a loss, but nothing that will affect the recommendations today. And then the Emergency Solutions Grant also got a small bump, and I wanted to share on our Housing Choice Voucher Program that that remained level. But we're just fortunate and grateful that we do have the funding we have at the same levels as last year. I'd like to give a refresher on the Community Development Block Grant. We have caps that we have to stick to, one of those being public service. We cannot exceed 15% of the total funding. We are including in this amount a carryover on the public service side of $24,000. I also want to explain we have a 20% limitation on admin cap as well.
Liz, could you define "public service"?
Yes. Public service are those type of human services, direct client services to clients. So when I go through some of the examples, one of them would be navigation services, supportive services. Anything that's non-public service would be considered economic development, public facilities improvement, and other types of activities that HUD deems non-public service. And I can share some examples if you'd like.
So I guess it's clear to everyone, but no more than 15% of the CDBG money can be used for the types of services you just described?
That's right.
Okay.
On the home program, that is strictly for development of affordable housing, whether it's homeownership or rental housing. We do have a carryover this year of $700,000. On the Emergency Solutions Grant, we call it ESG, there is a cap for shelter and outreach of 60%. The remainder of the funds we typically give to rapid rehousing, which is the case this year. On the Human Services funding, those are local funds. $108,000 of those are through ABC donations that our Mesa residents give through their utility payments, and then the remainder are general funds. We call that the Human Services Program, $612,000. Before I go through the recommendations, I just wanted to share what consideration is given when we award these funds. First, as I had mentioned before, the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board plays an active role in helping us score and rank these projects, as well as staff and community members also do another round of scoring, looking at the application more in depth. We take those scores, put them together, and then rank them based on the scoring. We also look at the City Council priorities, as well as our consolidated plan priorities. We look on projects that are related to construction or public facility improvements. We look at timeliness to expend those funds. We also look at what our funding is. So as you'll see soon in the next slide, we get much more requests than what funds we have available. So we have to look at how much funding we have to be able to give to the programs. On the Human Services Program only, we do provide a preference for those agencies, those nonprofits that are located and based out of Mesa.
Liz, can you talk, just when you talk about timeliness to expend funds, maybe review again that...
1.5.
Yeah, the 1.5. Thank you.
So HUD has a deadline requirement that our CDBG funds cannot have more funding in there that exceeds 1.5% of our allocation. So we have to ensure that all our funds are expended by April 30th of every year that meets that 1.5 ratio. What we have found in the past is if we have projects that are delayed or take longer, that can affect our ability to meet that deadline. And so we discovered that issue, and so as we fund projects, if we think it's going to take a longer period of time, we may either ask them to delay their application, or we have to take into account other projects and ensure the other projects are moving forward so that other projects that might take longer, we have that padding and that ability to ensure we're still meeting that deadline. If we don't meet that deadline, and that could cause HUD to revert money back, and we lose that funding for the next year. So that is very critical that we meet that deadline every year.
Mr. Freeman.
So Liz, I think you, this past year, we did reallocate some monies because of that, correct?
Yes.
Because there were some shovel-ready projects for some of the other nonprofits that they were able to give us some additional funding?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Freeman, yes, we did do what we call a supplemental process in order to identify projects that we can expend those funds quickly to help us meet that. And I will tell you, this year, we just passed our deadline. We did pass it with 1.46. So we're looking very closely at next year's. But yes, as needed, if we find projects are not able to move forward, we will come back to council and ask to help identify other projects that we could spend those funds quickly.
So it behooves some of the other entities to have kind of shovel-ready projects in the pipeline so that monies could be allocated?
Very good point, yes.
Just a word out there.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate that. I wanted to provide a picture of what was requested versus what was available. As you can see, on the CDBG public service, we received $663,000 worth of requests, but only had $559,000 to allocate. And overall, of all the requests, we received over $7 million in requests, and we had just slightly over $5 million to allocate. So the need is there. A lot of nonprofits do struggle from year to year with fundraising and those type of things, so these funds are critical to their operations. In order to provide some perspective of what we're funding, putting this into categories, the first one is being aging services. You can see the agency, the project, and the funding source, and the amount that I'm recommending for award. At Aging Services, we have agencies like East Valley Adult Resources and Oakwood, who are, do important work with our seniors. On the homeless services side, we do have been very consistently providing about this level of funding, just under $1 million, to address our homeless services. We have Community Bridges with Navigation, as well as Mark Community Services also does navigation. A New Leaf, Save the Family, they do important work around homelessness, and many of those funds are either CDBG or ESG funds. Second slide, on the same topic, again, we have Save the Family. They are collaborating with Southwest Lutheran Social Services to do rapid rehousing. CAS is a regional shelter that's based in Phoenix, but many of our Mesa residents that are homeless do go to the CAS shelter. Maggie's Place serves young women who are pregnant and homeless. House of Refuge, this is, I believe, our third year of supporting their Adopt a Home Program. And Posse Cristo, their nightly meal program. And we have funded Posse Cristo in different ways this year. It's to support their meal program. Domestic Violence Services, we are supporting and recommending funding for Autumn House. Under Economic Development Programs, Local First, NEDCO, and the Mesa Downtown Facade Improvement and Job Creation Program is one of those projects that received these funds. And again, these are considered non-public service examples here. This is another non-public service under CDBG, Public Facility Improvement. Child Crisis, this is our second round of funding to them for their campus creation. We have a new request from A New Leaf to do some pre-development funding for their Integrated Health and Wellness Center. Boys and Girls Club, what is, I'm sorry, is about roof and air conditioning of their building. City of Mesa Jefferson Park with their playground. And then City of Mesa Hibbert Urban Revitalization is going to be a long-term project. We're expecting this to be a three-year project, and so we are funding this first phase, and this is regarding utilities and improvements to Hibbert Street. Our, yes, it's Underground Utilities. Yes.
Which stretch of Hibbert are we talking about? Because it goes up into Site 17, does it not? We're not, that's not what we're talking about?
This is by Art Space.
Okay. Ah, okay.
Housing is a big component of the work that we do, and so there's significant funding for housing production or support. One of those is our homeowner rehab program, in which we help rehabilitate or provide emergency repairs to low-income homeowners. Chicas Palacalsa has two projects that we're funding, one with CDBG, which would be relocating existing residents at the Mesa Royale location, and also to help their second phase of homeownership, townhomes. Then we have our Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program. That's for any Mesa resident that needs help with rental and utility deposits in a rental unit. And then we have also our down payment assistance for homeowners. This is a great program. We are seeing an increase in requests to help people purchase homes with this down payment. And then the last one is a project that I came to you a couple months back, which is the Mesa Least Housing Project on Broadway and Haas for senior rental housing. One of the last categories is the services for low-to-moderate income persons. CDBG and Human Services often isn't always just to a particular targeted population. This is for broad Mesa resident-type services, one of those being mobile outreach and crisis stabilization by Community Bridges. We also have United Food Bank with the work that they do to provide food assistance. Mesa United Way, their volunteer income tax assistance program. And Mark Community Resources provides unemployment training and placement. And finally, Mesa Can does client services at their location down on Broadway. The final category is youth and education. You can see this has CDBG for the Mesa K Ready Program, and then the rest are Human Services, looking at teen lifeline and child crisis with their Emergency Children's Placement Services, the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and finally, Arizona Brain Food, that does backpack meals for children in the schools. Next steps, we now, after receiving your direction today, will go to public comment for 30 days. Then we will come back for final approval of our annual action plan, which will include these funding recommendations plus other requirements that we have to submit to HUD. There is one final request. In addition to the funding recommendations is your direction and approval of a new policy related to applicants for the next funding cycle. This is looking at applicants to ensure that they are not solely relying on City of Mesa funding, so we will be asking, if approved, asking applicants to demonstrate they have other funding sources at least greater than 51% of their total budget.
Liz, you know, we had a meeting past week about this, and so I just, you're going to hold fast to this.
Yes.
And the organizations know about it, too. I mean, you're getting the word out.
This is for next year.
I know that, but I mean, in preparation for that, I just don't want any pushback from organizations that they didn't know about this policy.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is new, and we would need to make sure we roll this out and make sure everyone's well-informed and what is going to be asked of them to supply in order to meet this requirement.
And if there's any exceptions to the rule, we just need to know what the playing game is.
I, yes.
So if a council member, somebody comes and says, hey, I want to deviate from this standard, you're going to say?
I'm going to say, Vice Mayor Freeman, I'm sorry, this is our policy.
Okay, that's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear. It's just like some of the chiefs I worked for. We're not changing it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation, Council. Questions for Liz or Dennis on this? We do have a blue card to speak, so thank you. Well, I don't mean to rush. Council, do you have any questions for the presenters? Okay. Thank you. And again, obviously, this was a huge effort. There was a lot of people involved in this, between your staffs and all the nonprofits that responded to these requests, and the city boards that evaluated and scored these requests. So I know a lot of work has gone into getting it to this point, and we really appreciate it. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Mayor, thank you. Let me add one more thing. In our discussion, we talked about other ways the city is doing some build-outs here in the downtown area, and if those funds qualify, and all that, yourself and Dennis, we had that conversation. So I'd encourage you to reach out to other staff members so that they're aware of that, so that we may be able to reduce some monies of our general fund if these funds apply over and can cross over to help with some of the build-outs that we're considering today.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Brady. That's just what I would add.
Thank you. We do have a blue card from David Short, and invite him to come forward. Thank you. I think you're good to have a seat. David, thank you for the good work you do at the DMA. Looking forward to hearing from you today.
Morning. David Short with the Downtown Mesa Association. On behalf of the DMA Board, we want to thank council, the city, and HUD for the first phase of the facade program. It's been amazing what those storefronts look like now, and to see the history of those buildings brought back. It's been a very well-received program, greatly approved the aesthetics of downtown, and definitely created a buzz. So we're here on behalf of DMA to ask for support in the funding for the second phase of the revitalization program, or the facade program, to remove more colonnades and bring back more historic storefronts. Brian McCormick, who owns 12 West Main, been a longtime property owner downtown, is currently undergoing a project on his building, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. He's been committed to the facade program since day one, so he's looking forward to bringing his 12 West Brewing and Restaurant into downtown Mesa, and, you know, excited about the facade program. So these facade programs are used in downtowns throughout the country, and they're looking to revitalize downtown, create investment, new business, and vibrancy. So we thank you and ask for your support in the second phase of the program.
Thank you, David. Appreciate all that DMA is doing. Okay, Council, is there any discussion, or if not, is there a motion regarding staff's recommendation? Mr. Freeman?
I'll move. I'll make a motion if you don't have any discussion.
No, no, no. I think you made the motion. Mr. Luna seconded the motion.
Correct.
To approve the very detailed recommendations that we just saw from the staff. Is all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks again for everyone who made that, went in, did all the work that was a part of that. Item 2B on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on a summary wrap-up of the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. Candace and Brian, good to have you back.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning, Mayor and Council. So we are here to wrap up the budget process. For the past, oh, little over a month and a half, we've come in front of you with a few presentations, kicking it off with the forecast at the end of March, then also doing a proposed budget in April along with the capital improvement program. And then the departments came in front of you and presented their operating budgets throughout the month of April and just ended last week. So putting this all together, the five areas of, there were five areas of emphasis for this budget. Kind of went through it when we went through the proposed budget. And these five areas came from the council initiatives during your guys' strategic planning session. And what I wanted to do was focus primarily on, in this wrap-up, is the new positions that were added as part of these areas. First, public safety positions that are included. There are some, for police, there's some general governmental. What I wanted to highlight here is that the public safety sales tax, again, we have 25 new positions in the 1920 budget that will be funded through the public safety sales tax. There are 17 sworn and eight civilians. On the fire and medical side, there are a couple of general governmental, one general governmental position, but then a couple of placeholders, one for a fire academy, and then another for training. And then also, I wanted to highlight that during the 1819, this current fiscal year, nine positions were added along for the general governmental. Eight of those were for the medic unit/transports, and those are civilians. And then also, for this fiscal year, 1819, our current fiscal year, we added two MRU units with 16 sworn positions.
Before we move on, I just, I think it's probably important for people who are watching this, understand that this doesn't mean that we're only having 25 police officers come out of the academy this year.
No.
Okay.
This is just incremental new.
Right. This means we're increasing the number of sworn police officers by 25, above and beyond what we normally hire, just to keep up with the attrition of the large.
Yeah, the 17 sworn.
Okay, I'm sorry. Seventeen sworn. A total of 25 positions, 17 of whom are sworn.
17 of those are the academy. And then the additional, we have the schedule of retirements and who's in drop, and so we will then have that scheduled, so it'll include, it'll be a larger academy than usual because we'll be adding these additional positions.
Thank you.
So next, as part of the Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, an illegal dumping program has been created, and within that program, there are two new positions, a field worker and equipment operator. But along with that program, there are some major equipment purchases. One is a small rear loader. That's so they can go in the alleyways, so a little smaller than your normal rear loader. And then also a skid steer and a trailer to help out with that program. I wanted to highlight the other positions also that are included, and here's a list of the departments that came forward. Most of them came forward with you and made their presentations throughout April. One to highlight is the Community Services Diversity Program Administrator. Also, I wanted to highlight that the library, they have in their 1920 budget a, for a position for a librarian, and then two and a half FTEs of assistant librarian, and those are related to the Dobson Ranch CIP project. Also, we have, I wanted to kind of highlight, was in the Enterprise Fund, we did add a couple of, a few positions, two in water resources, and then also two in environmental management and sustainability. So on the next slide, as per council's request, this lists, the slide shows the contributions and membership amounts that are included in the FY 1920 budget for these organizations, for the Greater Phoenix, GPEC Greater Phoenix Economic Council, the Mesa Gateway Airport, Downtown Mesa Association, Visit Mesa, and also East Valley Partnerships. So this is included, these are the amounts that are included in the FY 1920 budget. So as part of finalizing the budget, the state statute requires that all expenses occur that are going to occur in the fiscal year be added to the budget. So now what we will do is go through, and any expenses that are related to contracts or projects that will not be expended by the end of the fiscal year, we will carry those amounts over, and those amounts will be added to the fiscal year 1920 budget. Also, what will be carried over are any grant-related expenditures and revenues. So anything that we're not able to expend this fiscal year will be added to the budget for next fiscal year to be able to spend. So and then with the adoption of the budget, that sets, the budget sets the maximum expenditures that the city can incur during a fiscal year. So with that, what we also do is we add in a contingency amount. What this does is allows the city capacity to spend if there are any unexpected expenditures, any storms or anything like that, that is unanticipated. But also, what it does is sets an amount, gives an amount, so if there are any unanticipated revenues, that gives the city the ability to spend those unanticipated revenues also. So wrapping that all up, we will come back on May 20th with a tentative budget for adoption. Also, on the 20th, we will come back with a five-year capital improvement program. And then on June 3rd, the annual budget will have a public hearing along with the secondary property tax levy, and the final budget will be presented for adoption on June 3rd. And then on June 17th, the secondary property tax levy will be presented for adoption.
Excuse me, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about the secondary property tax levy. I assume we'll have some staff presentations prior to that.
We will, we are preparing that, Mayor, and so we have, especially since we've had the new authorization in 2018, there'll be the new levy to cover that additional debt that'll be coming on. But I think we're going to have some really good news for the council as far as what we had projected. As far as the additional cost per homeowner is probably going to be less than we had published during the bond election because of a good, increased values and in the race we've gotten on the bond. So I think next week, Mike, is that when we're going to do the presentation on the, or is it in two weeks, on the bonds sales? Next week? So we'll start presenting to you, we've gone to the market now with the bonds, we can tell you what they priced at, how they were rated, and that affects, obviously, the amount that we'll need to cover the debt. But we'll be reviewing that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you. So with that, that wraps up the kind of the budget process. Any questions?
Thank you. Council, questions for these folks? All right. Well, I'm sure, thank you. I know it's been a long process. Appreciate all the education you provided to the council, and we'll look forward to some more before we move on. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 1C. That's to hear a presentation and discuss the purposes and uses of the Enterprise Fund, including the Economic Investment Fund. Candace and Brian, welcome back. Candace?
Thank you. We switched. Musical chairs. So, good morning, Mayor and Council. Yes, this morning, we're here to give an overview of the Enterprise Fund itself. What the purpose of the Enterprise Fund is, how it supports the various expenses throughout the city, not just in the utility themselves. So when we look at the purpose of the Enterprise Fund, the Enterprise Fund, what it does is it sells goods and services to customers rather than necessarily public goods. So everything within the Enterprise Fund, the definition of Enterprise Fund is that you have customers. You set rates for those customers, and you provide a particular service to that customer overall. They support, the revenues from the Enterprise Fund supports the core purposes of the city, and Enterprise Funds are operated like a business, so as in we track all of the expenses and the revenues associated with operating that particular business. A portion of the income is dedicated to our general governmental services here within the City of Mesa. This is a real high overview of the core purposes of the city. We really have it kind of broken down into three different areas. Public safety, quality of life, and economic development are really the core purposes of the City of Mesa. Public safety is something we're all very familiar with, our law enforcement, our fire and medical services, as well as our court services here within the municipality. Quality of life encompasses many different things. Quality of life encompasses our parks, facilities, access to libraries, parks, access to culture or art-type instances within the city, as well as our neighborhood assistance and outreach into our neighborhoods and into our residents, as well as safe, clean, and drinking water, energy services, sanitation services, and then transportation way to get around the city. Those are all core quality-of-life services within the City of Mesa. The third area is economic development. Those could include things like business recruitment and retention, utility service expansion, so expanding our utilities in order to entice those businesses and industries to come into the city. to come into the city of Mesa. Tourism with spring training and convention center, educational opportunities that we try to create here in downtown, or partnerships with ASU. And also just downtown innovation and improvement. How do we get more traffic in our downtown and more vibrancy in our downtown would be part of our economic development that the city would participate in. When we really look at the history of the city of Mesa, remember how it relates to the enterprise fund, back in 1945, the mayor and the city council at that time made a decision to eliminate a general purpose revenue. The general purpose revenue that they were looking at was the primary property tax. So at that time, it was decided to discontinue the primary property tax and instead to authorize the increase of utility income from our utility department in order to cover those general governmental services that would have otherwise been, been covered by the primary property tax. That was back in 1945. Today, in 2019, we still, the, the city runs and still continues to provide those general governmental services, and we still continue to provide those without the assistance of a primary property tax. As we look at our enterprise fund as it sits today, the enterprise fund supports many of the core purposes of the city of Mesa, from utility operations improvements, which is what our kind of, as we think about it, enterprise fund is the first thing we think about. But we also, it also supports the public safety through a contribution to the general fund, as well as numerous economic development programs and projects. Some of those programs are the convention center and the amphitheater that draws many people into the city of Mesa that stay, who stay at our hotels, shop in our, shop in our stores and eat in our restaurants, as well as our spring training facilities. As the mayor and council are well aware, March activity, when it comes to sales tax, as we consider our second Christmas here, when it comes to sales tax in the city of Mesa, it has really become even with the sales tax that we receive in December through just holiday sales. When we look at holiday sales or sales tax in March, however, if we were to, if we had the ability to look at who was making those purchases, we would probably see a lot more non-city of Mesa residents making those purchases, which means we're increasing the revenues here within the city of Mesa or the available revenues. We also go, the enterprise fund also supports the economic investment fund. The economic investment fund participates in multiple projects. These are more project-based versus program. We would consider like the convention center and spring training programs that are ongoing and ongoing benefits, as well as ongoing expenses. In the economic investment fund, these are more project-based, while some of them can be ongoing. They are economic investment opportunities that benefit the city as a whole. It serves a financial tool to invest in growth and expansion of industries in the city, and also allows us to, to leverage when opportunities arise. So when opportunity arises in the city, we don't, we want to be ready to either expand our utilities, to assist in some way to entice those industries or businesses to come in within the city of Mesa, create jobs for our residents, and increase the investment they have here. Some examples of investment projects that have been funded through the economic investment fund are listed here on this slide. I won't go through all of them. I'm sure that many, most of you are aware of most of those. The last two on that slide are the ones that were just discussed last week. And so we've been, under council's direction, we have added those as economic development projects within the economic investment fund. Within the economic investment fund are also some self-generating revenues. For example, when we do have for the Center for Higher Education, makes a Center for Higher Education, those are lease spaces. So any revenue derived from any type of lease of those spaces goes back into the program, back into the economic investment fund to offset the expenses or the operating expenses of those. We also identify one-time revenues. For example, an example that we have here is the Zayo lease. That was a one-time lease payment for the lease of some of our fiber within the city. So we took that as an opportunity to invest again into these economic development or economic investment projects. And so those revenues were put back into this particular fund for tracking purposes. And then also those one-time sale of city property that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks, there's been a few properties that have come up that we were talking about, taking those revenues and again, reinvesting those back into economic investment activities for the city of Mesa. And so this fund, the economic investment fund, really takes all of those projects, the spent side of those projects, but also takes all of those revenues that we, as a city, has identified to reinvest and puts them in one place for better tracking, to see where we are on our economic investment efforts. When we look at the contribution to the, when we look at the general fund sources and uses, again, as it gets back to, you can see, so what we've done here, these are pie charts that we produce each year. There are typically two different pie charts in here, if you look at this, so that we can do a proper comparison. So the inner ring are the expenses of the general governmental funds. So you can see the police department, fire department, municipal court, parks and so forth. Those are in the categories. So those are the expenses. The outer ring is the sources or the revenues that we have available in order to provide those governmental services. And so the public safety contribution is that transfer, that contribution from the enterprise fund over into the general fund. And, and you can see how much that is in comparison to the actual expenses of public safety. It's really just kind of a drop in the bucket. And then we would, then you have your sales and use tax, that's what we anticipated for this year. I should point, this is this year's, we just wrapped up the budget, but this is 1819. Next week, you'll get the numbers for 1920. So as you look for public, police and the fire department, you can really see what the reliance is when we're looking at the reliance on revenues. So just in those direct public safety, which is police, fire and court, that does not include all of the support services that our support departments do for those departments, you can see that the expenses of just those three departments are larger than the combination of the contribution from the enterprise fund and our local sales and use tax estimates. The last big one is the intergovernmental. Those are our state shared revenues. Those would be things like the income tax and our portion or of the state shared sales tax as well. And so you can see that those are our three main funding areas. And then with just some small ones in our, you know, fees and charges, for example, parks and parks charges, some fees for some of their services and so forth. So this graph here is really just to show an example of, of what the expenses are within the general governmental funds and where those revenues or sources are coming from in order to provide those general governmental services that we provide.
Mr. Freeman?
Oh, with Candace is done. You ready for questions?
We're done, I'm done. That was it. Yes, I am ready.
So on slide 12, you're showing the outer side of the ring, the public safety contribution. That comes from the enterprise fund. That money transfers over.
Correct. The, the one, the public safety contribution, 108.4.
Yeah.
That is the enterprise fund contribution to the general funds.
So with that, I guess some of my questions is, how do we, this fund transfer? You know, it seems like it's $108 million this year. How do we calculate it to be the following year? Do we have a certain index? Because some of the questions I've heard in, in prior meetings is, when we go out for bonding, for bonds for community, they want to know our funding sources and how we operate. And the fund transfer is one of the components they look at and how much is in the fund. So what are we doing to determine the amount of transfer each year for, for what we're doing?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor Freeman. The, the enterprise fund transfer is based, is based much back to CPI, so the Consumer Price Index. So when you look at the 108.4 that we have here for 1819, when we come back to you, you'll see for next year, it's 110 and some change, and that's based on the Consumer Price Index. And so we have that based back to that. So there is no subjectivity in the amount that we transfer from the enterprise fund to the general fund. It's, it's benchmarked back to CPI.
So can I just, for historical purposes, I think it's important to know, because in the past, there had been some conversations, having this index is for year, how long have we been doing that, Candace? Four, five years? Something like that.
Yeah, probably about, it was, we froze, we froze it during the recession.
Right.
And then when we came out of the recession, we benchmarked it against the CPI.
Right. So in the past, one of the challenges we've had, or one of the challenges of the budget is when sales tax dollars were declining or stagnant, the council would use the transfer as a way to supplement or meet the needs of public safety. So that, that was in the past. That created a kind of an uneven adjustments to the transfer, and it became somewhat problematic because it didn't show very good planning purposes, and it, and it became erratic because there were some needs, obviously, in public safety where we needed more additional assistance, whether it was pay or whether it was positions. And so at some point, we make, we came out of there and met with the council and said, you know, we, we need to kind of create this index. And certainly, public safety services have grown at least to the amount of the index, if not more, in every year. So we were, we're comfortable that we're not overcompensating or we're, we're, we're not even keeping up with the growth in public safety, I guess is what we should say on an annual basis. So that index seems to be a modest or conservative number that allows us to meet the needs of public safety. But I guess my point is, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we, in the past, that had not always been the case. When sales tax had been challenged or stagnant, we would sometimes, council would request that we would fund public safety from the enterprise fund. But it wasn't a very planned purpose, it was kind of on an annual basis. And so we've kind, we've moved away from there and just stuck now to this CPI index. And so that way, we have it in our forecasts, it's planned in our forecasts. And when we come to you with both the general fund forecast, as well as the enterprise fund forecast, it's built in for the next five years or so, you will see that this contribution is in there, and it's a number that is indexed. So now we kind of, from our planning purposes and being able to have some stability from this number, that's, at least from the public safety contribution, that's what we've done.
So do you have the flexibility to increase that funding on, like you said, on an as-needed basis?
You know, it's up to the council to make that decision. Our preference is, we've kind of, from a fiscal policy perspective, have really tried to hold to the CPI as far as the public safety contribution. Now, on the other opportunities that, where we see opportunities to benefit both general government programs and economic development, which we believe helps the growth of the utilities, obviously, those kind of proj, our projects come to us at different times. We don't, we can't necessarily see those out five years. And so I think we, we're trying to be very careful that we look at those projects as opportunities to grow the city, to leverage opportunities. So, and many of those commitments, if you look back into the economic development, are long-term commitments that are inside the enterprise fund. The, you know, the spring training commitments are 30-year commitments. The higher education commitments are 10-year commitments on leases. And so, but we look at those and try, and make the decision that by having that investment, it not only benefits the general government, I mean, we can't argue, as Candace was saying, that our investment in spring training has leveraged millions and millions of dollars back to the city of Mesa. But we also see that as a way that that creates a quality of life, of services, that allows us to continue to grow and provide the amenities for the rest of the city. And so the utilities and the other operations of the enterprise benefit from that because they see that as an opportunity to bring more customers, whether it's both industry or residents, to the city.
I have a, a little different question here. So these funds are used to pay down our bond debt as we occur in each one of the enterprise funds, or is there no bond debt paid?
No.
Not, not on this part of it?
Oh, okay.
But on the overall enterprise fund? I mean, as we issue bonds and stuff?
When we talk about bonds, we have to separate them, right? We have to talk about them in two buckets. We have to talk about them as it relates to revenue bonds. And so the revenue bonds are typically associated with the utilities and the capital. So that debt is paid for from the revenues that are generated by those utilities.
Correct.
Right? And then the general obligation bonds, the parks, libraries, fire stations, police stations, streets, those are general obligation bonds. And those are funded by the secondary property tax.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Thank you. Council, additional questions for these folks? Jeremy?
I just wanna, I take issue with this chart. Can we bring the chart back onto the screen?
We have it on.
So on the enterprise fund transfer, it looks like we've relabeled it the public safety contribution. The 108.4 million is the exact amount of the enterprise fund transfer, correct?
That's correct.
So that enterprise fund transfer goes into the general fund, where it's up to the discretion of council how those monies are spent. It's not restricted to public safety.
That's correct. Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, the transfer in from the enterprise fund into the general fund is not a restricted resource when it goes into the general fund. However, for illustration purposes on here, what we are trying to show is that the amount as it relates to the cost of public safety.
And Mayor and Council, this is the way we have talked about it since I've been here. I know, I can remember specifically Mayor Smith talking about it this way, because public safety being the most important services we provide, the one source of revenue that we absolutely can control was the transfer. And so the first opportunity, the first thing we could apply that to was always public safety. So we've, this is not a new chart. This chart has been shown before. Certainly, it might have said general fund, but we always said that, or not general fund, transfer.
Enterprise fund transfer.
But we said that transfer was for public safety purposes. And even to the point now, we've done it so many times in presentations, it's now even described that way by our bond agencies. They see it as the public safety transfer also.
I don't recall reading that in the bond reports. But hypothetically, if the enterprise fund transfer went away, you would still have revenues from your sales and use tax and your intergovernmental sources in order to fund public safety, right? We're not, we're not insinuating that if the enterprise fund transfer completely disappeared that we would eliminate our police department.
No, but Mayor and Council, if you take $100 million out of the general fund, you would proportionally have to take it out of all the uses. And if public safety represents 75% or more of the services of the city, it still would be tremendously impacted by this. Otherwise, you wouldn't have a city. You wouldn't have parks, you wouldn't have libraries, you wouldn't have museums. You would only be doing, and even at a reduced amount, be doing public safety.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we eliminated them, hypothetically speaking, that we would still have funds left over from our intergovernmental sources and sales and use taxes to pay for public safety if the enterprise fund went away. And this money's fungible, right? It all goes into one bucket.
Right, but 100...
And it's up to the discretion of council how that money is spent.
No doubt. But if you lost $100 million...
Again, I'm not suggesting that we would eliminate our enterprise fund transfer, I'm only making a point that there would still be revenues left over from other sources to fund public safety, that, you know, the enterprise fund isn't the only source. It's up to the discretion of council how that money is spent.
Right. And then to, for the last 10 years, that has been the, that's been the presentation and the description the council's used.
But lots of those funds would be at the expense of other departments.
What's that?
Lots of those funds would be at the expense of other departments.
Yeah.
Programs that we provide to the city, the essential services that we provide to our residents.
It would be, and, and what's, what's unfortunate, well, this side does not capture all the public safety costs, it only captures the direct cost. But, believe me, police and fire need fleet, they need purchasing, they need HR, they even need legal sometimes. You know, so there's a lot of other services that are not included in here. So, you know, again, this is just the way the council in 1945 made the decision to increase income from their utilities to pay for city services. And for us, that's what we can control the most. And so if the most important thing we do is public safety, we've always allocated it there first. And that's how we've been able to explain it to the community, is why do we take the money from the enterprise? It's because we don't have a primary property tax, but we want to fund public safety first. That's the most important thing. And that's how we've explained it.
I may have some more elementary questions as I'm getting more and more familiar with the budget and the process. What is the total size of our enterprise fund as far as in millions or dol, you know, the, the...
Total?
Dollars?
It's like 400, 390 something?
Yep.
380. Go ahead.
No. Well done. For the 1819, well, I'm gonna go to 1920 proposed budget, since you'll be seeing it next week anyway. So our total uses is just under 400 million?
400 million. Make sure we do this right?
And then, we're trying...
And then, we're transferring just the 108, or is there more?
No, you saw the total, well, that's what we're transferring. But that's why we made this presentation to council to be very clear. There's a public safety transfer and then there are activities inside the enterprise fund that we mentioned, the convention center, the amphitheater, spring training facilities, those are run at net losses to, in their operations, although they leverage additional revenues outside of the enterprise fund. And then the economic investment fund is scheduled to be how much this next year?
Economic investment fund transfer for 1920 is scheduled at 8.4 million dollars. That includes those two projects that were, we were given direction from council last week to include.
So that 8.4, and how much are those other enterprises in the enterprise fund? Economic, what's the total?
The other enterprises total for 1920, 4.7 million dollar loss. That's a 1.9 million dollar loss in the convention center, a 1.2 million dollar loss over our Cub Spring Training facility, and a 1.2 million dollar loss over Ho-Hokum Fitch. Again, those are operating losses, not, does not include any of the other sales tax and everything else that the city gets.
Right. So that's 108 million plus about 13 million dollars that come, that the enterprise fund supports in public safety and economic development. Now, that's just direct, if you only look at the enterprise fund, that's what the number is. But our point has always been in council, when they made decisions to fund spring training operations out of here, is we know while the loss, there may be an operational loss because we have to maintain fields and we don't get, recover costs for that, but because of the activity that spring training brings, the leverage, the dollars back to the whole city are tremendous, they're in the millions of dollars. So this, it more than pays for itself over and over again. So, the way we have to do the accounting of this, we have to show it in this specific fund, but, you know, if we want, what we prefer to do is to say, the vision we have is by doing these projects, by investing in cahoots, by investing in AZ Labs, that creates entrepreneur jobs and it creates an economy that grows the economy, which grows the utilities, which grows the opportunities for more customers. So, we try to look at it at the macro level. It's very easy to pick it apart and just look at one particular project, but if you look at the totality of everything, the investment the city has made in a variety of economic investment programs inside the enterprise fund have brought back tremendous leverage of revenues to the city overall.
I just want to point out one thing. When we talk about operating income and losses, we're talking on a budgetary basis, that doesn't include amortization and depreciation. So, you know, if you look in the latest CAFR, I think Cub Stadium lost something like 5.6 million dollars last year, if you include those numbers, so...
Yeah. Mayor and council, we don't use, depreciation is a non-cash consideration, we look at cash on hand, that's how most cities look at it. The depreciation cost is there, but I would suggest that our spring activity bring in much more than 5 million dollars a year. And when we get our March report, I think you'll see that number will be significant.
Yeah, I'm not debating the amount that it brings in, I'm just simply pointing out that when you account for the cost of the depreciation of the building over X amount of years and understand that you're going to have to reinvest in that infrastructure, that has a true economic cost, whether you choose to account for it on an annual basis or not, I mean, that, that's why that's included in GAAP accounting rules, so that there's a standard in place that says you have to account for amortization and depreciation, those are true economic costs. So, I'm simply pointing out that, you know, the loss is significantly more than what the budgetary cash loss looks like.
Okay, I think Jen is still in the middle of some questions, so, go ahead.
Oh, anyway, well, I was going to comment about depreciation, but we won't get into property values and how they're accounted for in a tax situation. But anyway, so, how do we determine what percentage then we're going to transfer to the general fund for its uses or, how is that determined?
Okay, so the public safety transfer, we grew into that, and, right, and that's my point in the history, we had a tendency to kind of use it as a stopgap measure when the sales tax wasn't performing well. And we, but we still felt, you know, the council in the past would feel like we still needed to invest in public safety, so they would go to the enterprise fund and the public safety contribution to make up that difference. We froze it for a period of time and we came out of that four or five years ago, we kind of, we came back to council and said, listen, we're, we need to have some more predictability because we wanted to be able to look out in the forecast. So that's when we said, and I don't remember what the number was at the time then, but whatever that contribution number was four or five years ago, we took that amount and we said, now going forward, we're going to increase it by the CPI. And so that's how the public safety transfer, and as you look in our forecast and what, everything that affects, that's what it's projected on, right? It's 2%, 3% maybe, that's what the number we, that's how it's given now. So that, it's a fixed number based on the CPI. So we don't adjust it, even if one year we have a real big need for more public safety needs, we just keep it at that amount. That's the proposed, I mean, listen, I'm saying that's the policy that we've been using as a council. Now, that's the public safety side of it. On the economic side of it, we've tried to come to council and we have discussions, or even council members come to us and say, we really think that investing in a particular economic development project is important for downtown because it's going to bring activity, and because we have all the utilities in downtown, this is a good idea for downtown because it's going to bring more activity. Then we kind of go through that assessment, sometimes we'd actually do a formal economic impact study to verify that by investing in a particular project, it will generate additional revenues to the city. And so I think we have to be careful, right? We have to manage that process and make sure that as we make those kind of decisions on the economic development, that we look at it in terms of, is this really going to leverage and bring back revenues to the city as a whole, as well as, you know, is it a good decision for the enterprise fund also? Because that activity, we want those revenues to come into the enterprise fund through the utilities also.
So the initial amount that we, however many years ago, maybe going back to 1945, when the transition from primary property tax to using utilities or whatever. So it was determined at whatever time that it was, like, as funds, the dollars were as necessary. And then finding that stabilization, you know, with that average or what that amount should, is maybe year after year, and then adjusting it according to CPI.
That's how we're going now, yeah.
Mayor and council member Duff, so when we came out of the recession, it had been frozen for a time during the recession. We also had, on the enterprise side, we had some vacant homes as well, and so when the income was going down as well, and so we kind of froze it over that time. When we came out of the recession, we did a one-time adjustment based on CPI, from the time that we froze it to the time that we made the adjustment. So that adjustment was based on CPI, and then we've been using CPI ever since going forward. Has been our kind of, our policy or rule of thumb when we do the enterprise. What that does is it provides stability both for the general fund and for the enterprise fund. And so, the stability for both of them, we know what that transfer, that contribution is going to be each year, every year going out. We forecast the CPI, obviously, each year we change it to what the actual CPI is, but we kind of forecast that CPI out. It gives stability to both funds for planning purposes, and it lets us really focus on the operations of the enterprise fund, knowing that that is kind of a static, if you will, element of it. And what we've seen in the past is that we're able to focus on those operating expenses, and what we've had in the last couple of presentations from Water and so forth, is that their operating expenses are going up much greater than the CPI is going up. And so it's really not a major factor in their overall operations. Their operations are really more concerned with the cost of all of their stuff. So, setting that gives stability to that fund and stability to the general fund at the same time. And so that's really why we've kind of tried to really push and follow that policy of really setting it based on CPI and then planning around it.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have so many questions, but the 400 million of revenues, are those only derived through our enterprise of utilities or other resources as well? And is that, I assume, a revenue, a gross revenue figure and not necessarily after other expenses of enterprise investment?
Correct. For mayor and council member Duff, for fiscal year 1920, the total sources are estimated about 386 million dollars, those are gross revenues.
And most, and by far, the majority of that comes from utility revenues. Now, we've tried to identify, as we mentioned in the presentation, and we've mentioned this before, you know, if we sell the Mervins, if we, the Penale County land that we're going to sell, if we have additional dollars, we look at using those to offset some of the costs in the enterprise fund. But those are always not necessarily regular revenues, they kind of come as they do. We do have leases in some of the economic development deals that we do, and so those are collected and those are put into offset. But, again, as a consideration of the totality of that 386, they're a very small amount.
And also, mayor and council member Duff, one thing that we should note as well is when we look at the economic investment fund and how this actually started, when we originally kind of put together this economic investment fund for tracking purposes, was the fact that we had refinanced a lot of utility revenue bonds and had experienced a lot of savings and were able to take, some of those savings went back into the enterprise fund, into the utilities, and some of those savings we took and did the Mesa Center for Higher Education and Benedictine University remodel. And so that's really where this started, of this idea of reinvesting the savings that we have. So a lot of the large projects that we've done through this fund has been funded through debt service savings, when we're going to be able to increase our bond ratings, refinance our existing bonds that are allowed to be refinanced, that are callable, and actually have true cash savings in a single year. It's not an ongoing savings, it's a one-time savings. And then we've invested those one-time savings into these projects that then lead to more economic development.
Okay. Now, you mentioned like for the convention center and the spring training and everything, those losses, are those absorbed in the enterprise fund?
Yes.
Okay, those are, so when you're talking around 380 or near 400 million dollars in revenues, that's a gross figure and not netted with, against?
Correct.
Yeah, because the convention center will receive revenues, and so, but they don't receive, I think they, 50%, they're about, they don't completely cover all their costs, but they, but they're also there, it's important, I mean, if you talk to the hotel next door, it's, the convention center is very important. So that's, so, yeah, so it does run at a loss and that loss isn't absorbed within the enterprise fund.
Right. And also to point out, like, when you sell an asset like land or a building or whatever to use in the enterprise fund, that you're taking the value, whether gain or loss, whatever, the value of that, not less depreciation and all those kinds of stuff. You sell a property for 100 million, and that 100 million is coming through, you're not using depreciated values.
No, we're, yeah, it's if we, and we just brought that up because we can see now ahead of us with possibly the Mervins property in Penale County, opportunities to sell some property, and what, I guess we were kind of suggesting to council, those would make sense, let's take those one-time dollars and use to offset some of these specific projects that are in the enterprise fund that are economic investment projects. And that takes some of the pressure off of the total fund. So that's what we're proposing to do. And those will still have to happen, but that's what we're anticipating.
Okay. Well, I am in support of enterprise opportunities, just because I think we can operate our city in a point of not looking for a return on our investments and how we generate dollars and how we raise up incomes and how we, you know, function as a city, or we can just not spend any money and not do anything and, you know, keep expenses as low as possible. But, expenses are expenses, and how do we generate the revenue in order to have a good quality of life? I think everybody would agree with it, they would like to do better in their lives and have those opportunities, and gladly place, sales tax would be an awesome place to live, rather than just barely holding on and to be able to afford to live. And we as a city would do the same thing and not really have much to offer as a city as far as why, why do you want to live in Mesa? So, I had a couple other micro questions, but I'll leave it at that for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Other questions? Mr. Luna?
So hypothetically, if we eliminated our enterprise funds, to continue to maintain our wonderful amenities that we provide our citizens here in the city of Mesa, and we pay it only through our intergovernmental funds, would we be able to maintain those services?
So, mayor, council member Luna, so when we're looking at the total for 1819, the graph that we have here is 445 million dollars. And so in order to continue to provide the governmental services that we are providing today, we would need more than that because each year they go up, but just in this case, we would need 445 million dollars. So, any fund, any revenues that are no longer available for whatever reason, would cause us to reduce those services?
So, we would have to go through, go to another source in order to maintain the level of government?
Either replace the, either replace the revenues with some other source or to decrease the expenses, which is what happened when we went through the recession in fiscal year 0809, where, and so in fiscal year 0809, the contribution from the enterprise fund stayed static because it was scheduled, but the other two large contributions there didn't come in. Remember, every time we adopt a budget, those are anticipated revenues, those are not revenues that are known, with the exception of income tax, because we're two years behind on that. But other, everything else is anticipated revenues, they're projected and forecasted through the year. We anticipate receiving those and therefore we budget or plan accordingly, assuming that we will receive those revenues. Anytime those revenues come short, fall in short for whatever reason, causes us to go back and do mid-year budget adjustments. And we've done it more than once since I've been here, so we've been through, I've been through at least three, at least three times, that we've done mid-year budget reductions because revenues did not come in as predicted for whatever reason.
But programs and services and...
Programs, it was reduction, we had a reduction in programs, we've had reduction in positions.
Positions.
Through the recession, it was about 300 positions that were eliminated from the budget over the course of fiscal year 0809 and 0910. And so, so we've, we've done that, we've been there, and so these are the three main revenue sources. We try to be very conservative with our estimates. We're experiencing great revenue increases right now in sales tax. We love it, it's great, but we don't want to bank on it every year. And so we try to be very conservative and hopefully we have more revenues than we anticipated. And we can either, you know, pay off some of our debt, or we can increase some of our programs, or we can put positions in an area that we know we need but we couldn't afford. And so we, we do that every month. So monthly, we're doing revenue forecasting and expense reviews to make sure that we have the capacity to continue to provide the services that we're providing today.
One question, going back to the time of the recession in which we did such aggressive cuts and out of necessity, that was, I'm trying to remember, at that time, wasn't it like 60 million dollars or something like that?
The 64 million dollars was the first, our first round. And then we actually had a second round the following year because we did try to avoid reductions in public safety our first round, and unfortunately, we were not able to avoid that in the second round.
So, yeah, it affected everybody, including public safety.
Yeah, and that was pretty aggressive, that was around 64 million, so, just to give us kind of perspective, if we look at whatever we think is unnecessary, you know, going back to that, if it was a figure double that or whatever, it would be almost insurmountable to...
Correct. Mayor and council member Duff, that was 64 million dollars, and if you think of it in fiscal year 0809 terms, and so what the equivalent of that would be probably very similar.
Thank you.
We're glad all the recessions are over and we don't have to worry about anymore. Other questions of these folks? I have a couple. Going back to Jeremy's original question of the fairness of labeling this transfer the public safety contribution, how much of the 108 million dollars actually went onto a police, fire, court balance sheet? I mean, how much of that was actually, is public safety versus something else?
So, mayor, so getting to council member Whitaker's point, there is, when the enterprise fund contribution goes into the general fund, it just becomes general fund money. So if you, in essence, commingles with our local street, our local sales tax as well as our intergovernmental funds. So it is in one fund. We don't track the revenue source to the revenue expense, only by fund. So what's in here is quality of life, those are tracked. So we can say our quality of life, sales tax, we can tell you exactly where that was spent, which officer, which firefighter, and so forth, but general fund, we do not assign that way.
Yeah, but to the point is why we show the chart this way and why we've shown it this way for several years, because we have to explain, right? Oftentimes, we're asked to explain this transfer from the utilities, why am I paying utilities to pay for public safety? And, you know, that's the explanation, is you're, when you pay your utilities, well, people ask, why don't we have, it usually starts with, why don't we have a primary property? we have a primary property tax, right? And we say, we don't have a primary property tax. We haven't had one since 1945, when the decision was to increase the income of the utilities to pay for general governmental services. And so to depict that and to make that, the point, for the last decade at least, we've made the point is we know that public safety is the most important services we provide. And if the one source of funding, a revenue that comes to the city that we can control, it's the transfer. And so we've always shown that first against the core purposes, it's first priority against the services. Now, from a technical standpoint, from an accounting standpoint, certainly they, they are not any different than sales tax. But from a policy perspective, from a management perspective, from the way we do our budgeting, it is a public safety contribution. And when the councils in the past have made decisions because they wanted to contribute to public safety and there wasn't funding from other sources, the enterprise fund transfer was where this, where they went to to make that, make up that difference. So yes, you could, we could talk about it. It's not any different. The dollars from a transfer aren't any different than a permit fee or a, you know, a fine from the library. But from the purposes of explaining how the city is financed and priority, this is how we always explain it.
Okay. You know, I think that this story of 1945 is really fascinating. And, and I've seen, I was not here. I know a lot of people would think I was. But you see pictures of downtown Mesa in 1945. Mesa was a post-World War II boom town. We were doubling in size every 10 years. You see cars double parked and all up and down Main Street. And you can kind of imagine that between owning the utilities and being the, one of two places in the region that you could come to shop, we were killing it. And so I kind of get why the, the council felt a little guilty about collecting a primary property tax back then and said, we just don't need to do this because we're generating so much revenue between our other sources. So I kind of get why they did it. But I mean, as long as we're dealing with, with hypotheticals here, they essentially went from having a chair to having a stool. And they said, we're going, and in hindsight, we can question whether that was the right decision for them to make. It, it might've been a better policy to say, we'll just reduce rates, we'll reduce taxes, we'll have a broad base and we'll collect four legs of a stool rather than concentrating our revenue on three legs of a, four, four legs of a chair to three legs of a stool. So whether it was a good decision or a bad decision, I don't know. But I know it's difficult now to go back and go to the voters and say, hey, let's talk about adding a new tax to the city of Mesa. That's a very short conversation. People lose interest in that proposal very, very quickly. So going back to a chair from a stool, I think is politically not viable. Now, to talk about the wisdom of going from a three-legged stool to a two-legged stool, I think, again, we're inviting probably people in the future would question the wisdom of, of that as well. I think the broader base we can have, the more sources of income we can have and we control the amount of, and I think we do a good job in this city. I think it's, this is probably an appropriate time to remind ourselves that our utility rates are very competitive. For those who are downtown electric users, the rates are less than Silver Project. For those who use city gas, your rates are less than Southwest Gas. For those of all of us who use water, less than City of Phoenix. So we are very competitive when it comes to pricing our, our utilities. And so we haven't succumbed to the pressure of, hey, let's just raise the utility rates and whenever we want some money. And I think that's the commitment that we've expressed, this council as well, on all of the projects that we've been talking about for the last, since I've been here. We're committed to doing it without raising taxes, without raising utility rates, in spite of the fact that we are in a situation where we're building one and $200 million water treatment plants and waste treatment plants and providing a well-funded and well-maintained utility system to our citizens. So this is a fascinating conversation. It is fun to spin off into hypotheticals, but I hope we don't lose fact to the sight that things are working. We're, we're using the 1945 system that we've inherited and it's working. And if we try to monkey with it, I'm afraid of potential dire consequences. Jeremy?
I have a comment on affordable utilities. The average water bill per homeowner in Mesa is $645. In Gilbert, it's 292. In Chandler, it's 279. Our water rate is twice that of those other cities. If you combine our water and our wastewater together, the average homeowner cost is $1,016, which is higher than Gilbert's, Chandler's, Tempe, Scottsdale, Phoenix, Peoria, Anglindale. So I don't believe our water and wastewater is affordable. I just want to go on the record to say that.
Well, I'd, I'd love to have, we will have this conversation in detail. Obviously, it's not agendized to discuss, and I'm the one who brought it up, so I'll admit that. But we will have a meeting specifically on where we are comparative to our other communities and what our utility rates ought to be. I think it's already been announced that we are not, there is no pending proposal for any utility rate increases. I know there have been some dramatic rate increases in other cities surrounding us and, and that's being actively discussed. So we need to let the dust settle and now's not the right time to make that decision. But absolutely, that's a topic of conversation for this meeting, for this body to have as we go forward. Other discussion on this. All right. Thank you very much. The next, thank you for the presentation. The next item on our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of various boards and minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item three is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Counsel, anything you'd like to share with us? Jen?
I'm just always fascinated by the work that we're doing in the community. On the other night, I went to Mesa Public Schools screening of a movie. I forgot the name, Resilience?
The Biology of Stress.
Yeah. And I looked at the ACE, the adverse childhood experience ratings and, and looked at our life as a child and what experiences we have and how the adverse experiences and if they accumulate, how it determines the, how long we live, disease, while there we fall into despair, like homelessness, suicide, things like that. And the things that we can do early on in bringing mental health to our children and to those families and changing the course of their lives. It was very powerful and I look forward to the work that we can do in our community to change that trajectory. So thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Other comments? I obviously was not at our meeting Monday. I apologize for my absence. I was part of a group of local elected officials and business leaders that was in Washington DC with, sponsored by GPEC. Had some great meetings with our congressional delegation and with a lot of the business leaders back there, met with a lot of the major employers in Mesa who are office back there. So it was a productive trip and I appreciate Mr. Freeman conducting the meeting on Monday in my absence. Next item on our agenda is to schedule a future meetings. Mr. Brady?
Yes, we'll be having another study session on Thursday, May 16th at 7:30. We've mentioned that we have the barbecue. Oh, no, you were just, sorry, you haven't mentioned that. We mentioned that last week.
Well, we did and we're going to have it tonight.
Okay. What'd you go ahead?
We have a personal invite from any council member that wants to come out to the Lehigh Museum, Mesa Historical Museum. And you're personally invited, staff as well, if you're hungry.
Six to eight, correct?
Yes.
All right. So we'll see you then. Also, mayor and council, it's a big deal and we want to get the word out that we'll be celebrating the Gilbert Road Light Rail Extension opening on Saturday, May 18th from 9:00 AM to noon. And they'll be at the Gilbert Road and Main Street parking ride. It's a community event. It's a free event. We want the community to come out and celebrate the opening of the latest extension of Light Rail in Mesa, Arizona. So we're very excited.
So this, that's this Saturday. At what time does this start?
A week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's on this, the 18th?
The 18th, 9:00 AM, mayor.
9:00 AM.
Eight, May, Saturday, May 18th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
At Gilbert and Main.
At Gilbert and Main. Plenty of parking, big parking right there.
What's the ribbon cutting going to be or is there one?
That's it.
That's it. Although we don't do ribbons.
10 o'clock, 10 o'clock.
Oh, I think it's, there's a program that starts like at 9:15, I think, or something like that. So after the great speeches, mayor included, give, then, we have a different tradition. We don't actually cut ribbons in Mesa for Light Rail. So we're hoping to bring back our confetti cannon.
Oh, yeah. We write the light rail.
Yeah.
Do you like a battleship and hit champagne on it?
I don't think.
You can ask Mr. Smith. Better ask Mr. Smith about.
Some bubbly stuff.
All right. Great. Okay. So that's a week from Saturday. Anything else, council, we ought to discuss today? If not, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.